All right, in two weeks please. Yeah, we can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you turn things to the secretary's minutes?
I have some corrections that might be done. Ready?
In your chair, please.
Bill Lene is listed on the top portion. He was actually here for open forum.
He wasn't here though.
No, he wasn't here.
Oh.
Nancy's aware of that and she took his name off and has reprinted the top page for us, so.
Okay.
Yes. She's not sure where she got that from either, so. Somebody must have said his name or something.
So I have a question. Is Phil no longer on this board?
He never had been.
No, Phil.
Bill Lene is not.
No, Phil.
Oh, Phil, yes.
No, who did that?
So his seat is open?
Marilyn. Wherever she is.
Oh, so she took his seat.
I believe so.
Okay.
Actually, in June we'll have two. Dan and Sue's. Sue's term expires in June, but that was never filled. And then Dan is not going back on, so there's two.
So I might add, Guido is very helpful to get this ahead of time.
Yes.
And be able to read it because it's not a catch-up thing. Some parts in there. Thank you very much. So how do you get that and how do we get it?
I came in and it was available and I brought it home, scanned it, and emailed it to you.
Great.
How old-fashioned.
What's that?
I said, "How old-fashioned."
John, were there any other things that you?
I have a few if I may.
Anybody else?
The secretary's report. The first paragraph says whether only two people that lock in the door came from Westboro. And Alma said it was actually eighty-two point eight percent came through the door. Are there numbers available?
I know. Yeah, that's where I got the numbers from. We pulled that up for last year's. Because everybody was saying that nobody from Westboro comes here and everybody goes other places and all that other. Here we go.
Thank you.
So I had Kristin pull up some of those numbers. And I was hoping I would have numbers for you today for, it was last month, April. But they're still working on them in the office, so. But every, I mean, I ended Friday morning yoga, much to the dismay of the three people in the class. I ended line dancing, much to the dismay of the one person in the class. However, chair yoga has expand, I mean, she's, her class gets bigger every week. And strength, here's Nancy, strength and balance, had a class on Wednesday, she now has a class on Friday afternoons. And I think she had nine or 10 people here on Friday afternoon and it was such a nice day. I was surprised, but people came, so. So those other classes are, with the new instructors are growing, so.
Hi Nancy.
Yep.
Guido, I believe you made some changes in the last meeting in the minutes?
We gotta get Nancy plugged in.
There were some changes last month, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, I.
So on the.
Well, she did say that they were made, but I don't remember now what they were.
No, I don't either, but I recall you made some. So I think it should read, the secretary's minutes has amended with changes.
Yeah, it will say that.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended comes out.
Yeah, you're right. That's all I have.
That's it? Okay. Nancy, take a deep breath. I am taking some notes to get Trudy Barde. Everybody said it was hacked, I couldn't believe it. It's happening a lot, just everybody, just be careful because they're very sneaky. I had to change the two, call the two banks. Kristin had her phone hacked a week ago. She was beside herself because all her wedding stuff isn't, you know, the wedding stuff and everything, so. Oh, that's awful. Yeah. Were there any other comments about the meeting minutes from last month? Any other correction? I will say, just because I didn't put it back on the agenda, shredding was amazing. The wine started at 9:30. Mike hadn't even gotten here to get the cones out yet, there were already people lined up to get going. The police picked up a lot of pills and stuff. It's amazing to me how much of that stuff is still sitting around after we've done so many of these. And lots of sharps got taken away by the fire department, so it was a good, plus it didn't rain.
That's a good one.
I watched that weather forecast all weekend, I was like, oh my god, it's gonna rain on Monday. But no, it didn't rain, it was actually a really nice day, so. It's a good, I mean, it's, you know, it's not cheap anymore as it used to be, but it's a good, it's a good service and.
Amen.
Yeah. Okay, may I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Accept it.
We go second, may I have a shoulder hand? Accepting minutes?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have one. Oh, it's Shelby. Shelby.
Oh, yeah.
Would you wish to speak of the open forum, Shelby?
No, I'm just here, I'm just here as the board's liaison, like board's liaison. And a resource, obviously we've got other representation in the town manager's office today, so.
Would you, you may join us if you want to come sit in.
Um, sure, yeah, I'd be happy to, thank you for that, but.
Yeah.
I'm a little easier to hear.
Does she have a knee done?
Uh, foot surgery.
Oh. And that's it then. Old business, and I think this is what we're all excited to hear about Alma. Can you? Wait a second. The survey came back to Westboro, I think, Thursday. I'm trying to be optimistic. If you can read it online, do that. If you can't, I will make copies of it for you. I didn't want to, it's 91 pages. But a lot of it is charts and graphs and that kind of stuff, but the executive summary is what, about six or eight pages? I mean, I can make copies of that for you, but I didn't want to go do that because I didn't want to use up all that paper and then have everybody say, "Oh, I read it online." So if you want me to print a chunk of it for you, let me know and I'll do that. And I'll get it in your mailbox by tomorrow or Wednesday, probably Wednesday. But if you can read it online, go ahead and do it.
I printed it.
All 91 pages?
All 91 pages.
Oh, right.
Yeah, it stayed up till midnight reading it.
I was gonna say, you stayed up to midnight printing it.
I ran out of ink.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of too, so. But anyway, so let me know and I will, I'll take care of that for you, so.
I thought it was a very good report. It had some pluses and minuses about the, about the facilities here. And I think, just to go back to a meeting or two ago, when I said, "When this report comes out, I think we need to gather for probably a good part of the day and after reading that report with some of the boards in the town to try to figure out how we can move forward on some of the issues." Because there are some major ones in there.
No, and I, I know that. Like I said, there was a part of me, and I talked to Kristi this morning, a part of me that was kind of heartbroken at some of it because I thought we're doing the best we can with what we got, you know? But, and then there were other parts of it that were, you know, didn't really apply to us. Like I don't have anything to do with sidewalks, so. Yeah, or parking downtown or taxes, I mean, that's, you know, but anyway, so. We shall turn it over to the ladies at the end of the table and who have both read it cover to cover two or three times since Thursday, guarantee it.
That's true, true. I'm happy to hear that some of you have had a chance to read it. I do think, even though it's 91 pages, it's actually kind of, it's such an interesting read and I think you'll find it that way, that you go through it pretty quickly. And I think to Alma's point, there are some overall themes in here and some of them are probably takeaways for other departments. Just in terms of our rollout, we wanted to meet with you first, which is today. And then tomorrow evening at the select board meeting, we'll have sort of a similar discussion where we talk about some of the broad themes. But really, sort of pushing everyone to that May 16th date, I think I see the flyer. And that's where UMass Boston will present the report. And then I think, like we do with all of the other reports that we get back, as staff, we'll gather to create recommendations and then whatever is applicable to this group that Alma will bring back. So there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of good stuff in here in terms of just learning. You know, I think there's takeaways for me, there's takeaways for all of you, there's a lot, there's just a lot in here. So I don't know if we want to just, for those of you who haven't read it, if we want to speak to some of the overall themes. They are, the executive summary is very short, which is where it creates, lays out the themes and then the recommendations. Do you want to do that or do you want me to do?
All right. And I have, I apologize, I forgot to push the full color for when I printed yours. But I have some extra ones here. If you're going to church or live in a neighborhood or a community or wherever you're going to be around, the hairdresser or the barber shop and when I take one of these to put up, that would be great.
Okay. Just for the context again, as a reminder, the folks from UMass used several sources to pull together, are included in their recommendations are based on the community survey. So that was mailed out to over 5,000 residents age 55 plus. And they received back over 1,600 responses, so that was a 29% response rate. So 1,600 is a significant number of folks weighing in.
Yeah, and I know there were some people who didn't fill it out twice if there were two people in the household. Like, well, we didn't do it twice, we only did it once. And I'm like, oh no, you were both supposed to fill it out, but that's okay, so.
But then they also relied on information through key informant interviews with primarily staff as well as focus groups, various focus groups that included a wide range of representatives from the community, community agencies, other departments, sort of all walks of life. So in addition, there's a demographic profile. One of the takeaways from there is the population, the senior population has increased from the 2010 to the 2020 census. And then they're expecting significant increases over the next 10 years as well. So that's in part the context for as we move forward, we will see some of these needs and issues likely affecting a greater proportion of the community as it ages. So in terms of the overarching themes that were heard from each of these, the survey respondents as well as through the key informant interviews, as well as the focus groups, these themes were heard in all of those settings or venues, if you will. So one of the primary findings was around the cost of living and particularly the availability to downsize. So options for downsizing are perceived as challenging for individuals as they think about aging in the community. Included in that, there's some discussion around taxes. And as taxes have increased, that burden becomes challenging as well when you're primarily talking about individuals on fixed incomes. Another theme was around transportation. And there's quite a bit of discussion around different facets of transportation. They have information on, in the demographics section and some of the questions they asked in the survey around individuals' use of transportation. And obviously, that's a key determinant of someone's independence is if they are able to get themselves to and from various locations and places. So there was a section that talked and kind of framed individuals' capacity to continue using their own transportation and/or to use transportation in the community. And that was identified as a challenge, as limitations for those who don't drive or wish not to drive themselves, availability of other transportation modes. There was also discussion and identification of issues around support due to cognitive or physical conditions. And they also touched in this section, there was a lot of discussion around caregiver needs and the significant proportion of individuals who themselves are in the respondent group of 55 plus but who also served as a caregiver in the past five years for someone. So there's a lot of discussion around some of the challenges and the need for support for folks who are in that situation. They themselves may have challenges, but then they're also taking on that caregiver role. So there was a lot of discussion around the challenges and the opportunities for more support for those individuals. There was discussion around the physical space of the senior center. One thing that came up in several venues in the discussion, both at the focus group level as well as the survey, the challenges of actually pulling out of here and turning on to Route 30, that came through loud and clear, some of the concerns about that.
Yeah, I tried to get them to make it a four-way intersection when they redid the, you know, when they put the lights up and all of that. And I was told that they couldn't move the end of Rogers Road over because it was wetlands. And I'm like, well, it is where it's built now too, so just move it over and, but that didn't. Nobody thought that was a good idea, I thought it was awesome, but yeah, that was a problem.
So in addition to ability to safely, perceptions around being able to safely access the site, there were comments about the building, the condition of the building itself and the opportunities for something that provides space that can offer a greater array, both in terms of the functions and how the space functions as well as the amount of space.
Was there any discussion about locating it more central downtown?
Yep.
This is really kind of a off-site, out-of-mind.
There was discussion about that, the location of the building and the sort of desire for something that's more accessible to pedestrians downtown, other amenities, things like that.
Yeah, so when, when it's, when we started out to build this building, there was discussion about having it down, like closer to downtown, but there was no, I mean, back then, there was, Tufts Machine Shop was still, I mean, everything was still intact 35 years ago. So, and the only other place that they considered was the V-Arc Building, for which the fire chief is grateful we did not build there because then he wouldn't have been able to expand the fire station, so. But there really wasn't any place else for us to go. They did talk about the other side of Route 9. But then that was, you know, that was too far away and having seniors drive over Route 9 and all that good stuff. So the town owned this property, so that's how, that's how it ended up here, so. Just so you know, it wasn't, we lucked, so.
So in terms of talking about the space needs, was also discussion about the range of programming and individuals had an opportunity to express their interest in what they would like to see offered. There was a strong desire for personal growth type of programming, educational opportunities, day trips. Some of these things we know are already provided, but it seems like that seems to be a particular interest of respondents as well as acknowledging that the services here do definitely cater or do serve a population in terms of the individuals who are coming here. There was, the discussion and interest was around how do you expand the reach to potentially younger seniors and get more of that population, some of whom are still working. And they acknowledge the challenges of programming for individuals who may still be in the workforce. But some conversation or discussion around that to identify some potential program.
Yeah, there was lots of, lots of chat about nights and weekends. But I'm sure if I went to town meeting and asked for six more staff positions so we could be open nights and weekends, that all would be over well.
Well, I do think though, I know you're making a joke, but I do think that this, the purpose of this study is to highlight all of these desires, I guess, from, from the seniors living in Westboro. And then, you know, as we've done with other studies, using this information to support any of our future requests at town meetings.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't, I mean, I just, you know, I, I get it, I'd love to be able to do some of that stuff, but not with what I have for staff right now, so.
Yeah. So somewhat related to what I was just saying, there's a finding around awareness and understanding of the senior center is uneven among residents, particularly those under the age of 70. And what they identified of the respondents who use the senior center, they tended to be in the group in the, over 70. And again, there's acknowledgement that how do you expand the reach and pull in seniors who are between 55 and 70, as well as recognizing that you have a group whose core users here, they're using senior centers elsewhere, they acknowledge that. As well as an opportunity to promote the programming and what's available here to what they, people often refer to as the younger seniors. And how do you go about doing that? How do you reach that group? And, you know, they had a number of ideas and thoughts around an ambassador program. And some of those things are probably potentially things we could discuss for the council on aging supporting as we get into that, pulling this out.
That, that particular theme, I think we've also acknowledged that we could, there could be support for addressing some of these things with some more collaboration between both this department and other departments, like the recreation department. So, and that's very specific in here, the recommendation.
So you think you have time by May 16th to digest this enough to give the public?
No.
Okay.
That's not what this is. So the May 16th meeting is for the UMass Gerontology Department to present the findings. Yep, yep.
So they'll get into much more detail, we're trying to hit on the highlights today. And they'll get into the.
So eventually you'll digest it and.
Yes, yeah.
Give an update.
Yes, and, and, you know, that would be in the next couple of months to work with staff and to come back with recommendations to, you know, bring those to the select board and also to this group. And as Kim mentioned, you know, that particular piece, you know, there's, there's a lot probably to be done by the council on aging. And so I think it would be helpful if we could, for others, other departments and also volunteers to highlight sort of where we see roles and responsibilities for follow-through with this landing.
I have a practical question. I noticed that the meeting is set for the senior center.
Yes.
And I wonder if there's a capacity number here, none?
Well, there is, but we can fit 250 people in that room if we need to.
And my question is, do you think that's, I mean, it's too late to change this, I think. But is, is this an appropriate location to have that? I mean, it will allow people to see what's here, for sure. But the auditorium at the high school is certainly big enough to handle a huge crowd.
Yeah, I mean, I always hope we run into that kind of problem, absolutely. We do have, we did make sure that Westboro TV was going to be available to stream it live so that people can watch it from their homes as well on TV. I think if we do run into that problem, that we would accommodate for a second meeting.
Would people who watch it at home be able to call in with questions?
I don't think so.
Is there a way that that can be set up?
I don't know, have they ever done that for any of the other meetings?
Yeah, I mean, we've done hybrid meetings, I think this is really more of a presentation. UMass is certainly available for follow-up questions, so if you're hearing questions after the presentation, we can follow up with UMass, so.
And how is it going to be set up here? Is staff going to do that or is?
Yeah, we'll take care of getting it set up on Tuesday afternoon.
Karen Henderson was here last week and verified that they'll be able to stream live, they've got a strong enough signal. So that would be working.
Okay.
But UMass will really run the program.
Right.
Along with Christine and Kim.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'm sure we'll get phone calls Wednesday morning from people. And if I can't answer it readily or if Christie or Kim can't, we'll just refer them back to UMass. So, or call UMass and have them call, however they handle it, but.
UMass will present on the methodologies and the actual data, the details of the report. I think folks will be equally interested in the next steps, which to your point, will not be ready by the 16th. And so we'll promote that, you know, just as much as we've come up with.
What would be the next step?
So the next step would be that discussion I was saying amongst staff to identify where these sort of different responsibilities would land with some action item recommendations that would come back appropriately to different departments or committees.
You know, we can't do anything about the taxes or the sidewalks or, but we can do stuff about other things, so.
And I think we, the council, can also be reviewing this and come up with a set of recommendations of priorities and things of that sort ourselves and work with Christie and the town management to, you know, to work those out.
Anything else that you wanted to add?
I think if there are questions from the council before the 16th that you know, I think there's no harm in sharing those with Christine and Kim, if that's appropriate to say. So if you go through the report and you have questions, to email those, I think that that would be, that would be great because you're obviously an engaged body that's active particularly here as well as beyond in the community. And so by sharing those questions, it, you know, it certainly gives the presenters a heads up of maybe what wasn't clear to you in the report or, or a particular area where you think that there's additional clarification or, you know, where you wholeheartedly agree, so. Well, and the thing is too, that if the same question kind of keeps coming up, we can maybe refer back to Caitlin to kind of address it, putting up all the questions. Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just, you know, it's always, as a presenter, I always love to know, I mean, you guys are getting a preview, whereas the rest of the community really isn't, although the report's available, you know, online. But you're getting a preview in this conversation now, so I think that that's certainly is, I think as a presenter, it's always helpful.
One of the things that I've never heard of, that was mentioned in here, is the Citizen Leadership Academy. I went on to the town website.
Best course ever.
For it and all I found.
That's how we got Shelby.
I found some references to it in various agendas, but no information really on, what is it?
So this is, so I guess a couple of things. So Citizen Leadership Academy, we've had one, it was in 2015. It's a course where, I think it's like a nine or 10-week course at the time, where folks who were interested could become students of the Leadership Academy and learn about what different departments do in the town and how the town operates. The board has made a goal that we do that again, so we're bringing that back. So that's probably what you saw, was that it's been on the agenda. And so we're actually presenting on it on June 13th, which will, and that course will happen in the fall.
So this is something that the town is putting together?
Yeah. The comment probably within here as a recommendation, my opinion is, I'm not sure that what they're proposing that we discuss in the Citizen Leadership Academy fits completely within that framework. And so there might be an opportunity for some other sort of Leadership Academy, you'd probably call it something different, but I do think the point of that comment is that the council, the town, that everybody needs to, could do a better job. But I do think the point of that comment is that, um, the council, the town, that everybody needs to, could do a better job making people aware of the different programs that are offered.
Yeah, they were saying make sure that it's accessible to a little bit of residents.
Right, yes. So I agree with that, but then they talk about, um, um.
The different styles.
Some of the specific things that we might wanna, yeah, but yeah, it would absolutely be open to anyone. So yeah, making sure that that's well advertised in all different areas.
I'm working on my questions.
I, I answered my, you answered my question.
So at the end of this meeting next week, will one of you be there to say that once the town departments digest everything, that we will give an update in the fall or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Address certain issues, maybe some issues can be addressed right away and others will take longer.
Yep, yes.
So I think similar to like what we did with the strategic plan, uh, where we had this, you know, kind of big plan and lots of recommendations. Um, you have, sort of have to distill it out, get feedback from those departments and then kind of bring it back and then prioritize it, right? Because many things, um, even the low hanging fruit sometimes has a budgetary impact, right? Or future budgetary impact, right? So, um, but I think the other piece of this and it's referenced in here is that we also have a master plan that was recently done. So to the extent that recommendations in here dovetail with that, I, I mean, my mind is that sort of elevates that prioritization depending upon kind of what, how that, you know, that plan recommended it. Um, so, um, so I think that there's a lot, kind of, there's a lot of momentum behind this that's not just this assessment. Um, and it is an assessment, so then there still has to be the plan for, you know, how you implement it.
It's also, this particular project was an outcome of our strategic plan.
Right.
Which is being updated, which will pull on this as well as the master plan for action items in the next couple of years, so.
So one, one of the things that stood out, there's a lot of low hanging fruit, you know, I agree. And I've really read the executive summary at this point, but, uh, there's a lot of low hanging fruit in one of them. You know, it was that there would be a, a large increase in participation if they only knew what we had to offer here, what the senior center currently had to offer. So it seems like eliminating the need to subscribe, uh, you know, pay six dollars a year for the newsletter and just mail that out to everybody every month, all of the over fifty-five households that got the survey. I mean, how much could that be?
Um, a lot.
Six dollars.
But I think to your point, it's, it's an example, and maybe if that is a strong outcome, maybe that's part of, you know, that's a future budget, I, right? Like, and it's supported by the survey. So I mean, I think that that's a great example of, you know.
Came up a couple of times.
Well, and there are a lot of towns that do that. I mean, it's not, I know Medway does it because my sister's always giving me hers. And Millbury, where Laurie and Danny live, she brings me theirs too. So it's mailed to everybody who's got somebody over sixty. I guess I would say though, like, I know that the rec department sends out its, uh, I forget, twice a year, right?
Twice a year.
And we don't get charged for that. So I don't know the history around the newsletter and requiring a subscription, but I get it in the mail and I obviously can look at it online. But, so, I think that that's a great example, you know, why, I mean, I'm not sure why one goes one way and one, but both are available in paper. But the frequency of the rec is not as frequent.
But I think that's an example of something that could come back here and that you could all put on an agenda.
Right. Yeah, and there are a couple of things that were in there that are kind of in the works right now anyway, so.
I do see several of you have the announcement for the presentation next week, so.
Yeah.
To the extent that you can push it out through any networks you have in the community and hopefully we'll have the problem of a, a full house.
Have coffees.
Would appreciate that.
In color.
I'll take one.
I also think it's good timing. Actually on your agenda is the council on aging board training, which I think a lot of you are signed up for.
All of them are signed up.
Oh, great, even better, so.
Nancy, keep the pass up to me. I'll put it in church.
On the church, there's one for the fellows, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I think as you're sitting at the training and sort of listening to the delineation between the role of staff and the role of the council, you'll have this in the back of your mind and the context around that. I don't think we had anything else we wanted to add. It's good to get feedback from those who have read it. And, you know, as we said before, if you have thoughts or questions or, you know, just want to chat about it, um, I think we would love to hear from you in advance of that meeting so that we can help Caitlin kind of tailor her presentation.
Took me a while to find it on the internet.
Really?
So.
We put it in so many places.
I only found one.
The town's website is it easy to get there?
I know, but it's a work in progress, as Diane says.
So just for, for people to know, it's on the front page of the town website. It's on the senior center page of the website. And it's on the town manager page of the website, so.
Can you say that again?
Yep, so it's on the front page of the website. Um, it's on the senior center page, um, in the news and announcements.
Okay.
And then it's, um, on the town manager page under reports. Uh, also on your, uh, on these here, if you, everyone, you know, you see this at restaurants, right? The QR code to scan with your phone. If you scan this QR code with your phone, it pop, it comes, goes right to it on the website. So this will go to the full, uh.
And just by scanning really, you can just go to your camera, like you were taking a picture of your grandkids, right? And they just, it will actually pull up that there's a link behind that and you just tap it and it will bring you to it.
But even with these glasses reading something like this on the phone.
But, but once you have it, once you have it, if you're comfortable, you can then from your phone email the link to your personal email address. And then you can view it there.
So, uh, this is one of the comments that was in this report about the fact that many of the older people, uh, myself included, cannot figure out how to use some of these things. Like I, I know, I don't know what a QR is. I, I have to, I wouldn't even try to use it because it was just too frustrating. And so you give up on it easily.
Yeah. I think that's why we're trying to make it available in many different. So Alma, I think you have executive summaries printed that are available.
Yeah, I just wanted to see how many people needed them, so.
Well, so you can pick them up in all the offices in town hall. You can pick up the executive summary. This is actually, I stole this. Cela is not happy with me, but we have a full copy on our desk. There's full copy in the library that you can read. So there's a lot of different places that you can look at it. And we've told all the department heads that if anyone asks them for a full copy to print it for you, so.
All right, so.
Good.
I was going to actually suggest that we have three or four copies.
Well, yeah, I just.
Physically here in the building, uh, not to be taken out, but just for folks to come in and, and, and read here over the next, you know, several weeks.
Yep. And we can do that.
Yep, okay.
So maybe we could also go in the library also to get into a computer, you know.
Yep.
So maybe that needs to be out there. Some people, oh, they go to the library and do it.
Yeah, well, I think that, and as you're socializing this among your friends and, um, you know, I think that that's a great point, you know, to, to, to share. I think sometimes we are, we are rich in resources, but sometimes the resources are not always well known. And if you can't, if you don't know how to operate a computer at the library, you know, the librarians would be more than happy to help you get there, you know, navigate.
Or, or to print a copy.
Yeah, right, yeah. I will go to Chrissy's office.
I'll go to my company. Thank you.
Chrissy, what's your email address?
All spelled out.
Dot MA. Dot US. Yeah, we're changing that, but they are, it's very long right now.
It's only long because Westboro is so long.
Yeah.
Cause Sudbury and Hudson and a couple of other towns have the same thing. And it doesn't look quite as long as ours does, but Westboro's a little longer.
We're gonna change the email extensions to westboroMA.gov. But right now it's like town.westboro, Massachusetts, United States, North America, like Earth. It just goes on and on. So it just feels very long.
Galaxy, yeah, galaxies.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for doing this.
Well, thank you for helping us.
Let's pack the house on the sixteenth.
Hmm.
Yes.
Yes, seriously.
Yeah, yeah.
What time is that?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay.
And there's transportation available.
Mm-hmm.
Hi Will, and I just have a comment. In the last few months, I have visited other senior centers in the area. And our building is small. However, some of the other buildings that I have been in, they look huge from outside. They're not. When you get inside, they're small. There's, Alma puts so much in here to offer to people. I mean, the lady, the people were doing some kind of exercises or yoga or something.
Yoga.
They're laying on the floor right out there in the library area.
They like being on the rug.
Yeah.
But we make every effort, I feel, here to offer diverse programming for all of our seniors. And, um, I say we're right up there at the top of the heap. We are there. I think we do a lot here, a lot of people, very dedicated. That's the one thing I have noticed in going and visiting in other senior centers is there are faces that have become familiar. People that seem to be there like a goodwill ambassador, um, to greet people as they come in. Um, I would love, love, love to see our town keeping a separate senior center versus a community center. That's just my opinion. I.
I think though, you know, um, that's in here too. So that's, that's great, that ta- talking about, um, a senior center versus a multi-generational center. That's also talked about in here. And one of the things that I think comes through is folks are interested in a multi-generational center with dedicated space for seniors. So, um, I think that's what we, that's a takeaway from here and there's good data in here to, to, you know, support that. So, um, I, I think it's always hard to hear critiques of the things that we do, um, especially when we enjoy them so much. But I think, you know, as you're reading this, you know, keeping, just understanding that they're really highlighting opportunities that I think we'll be able to take advantage of.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I want, truthfully, I want the best for our town, for our senior center. I think the senior center fills a lot of need for a lot of people. And friendships have been formed amongst people over the years and so forth. And we need that. Being alone is, is not fun. And, um, to come into the senior center and have a cup of coffee, sit down and have breakfast, lunch or dinner. Um, I think these are things that are very important. And the caregiver meals, when my husband was so ill. I can't find enough words to say how much that meal meant to us. And every last bite of it was eaten. Uh, the servings were large for, for seniors, but quite often we had at least two meals. And that was two meals. I did not have to.
Think about.
Put about, think about, cook, shop, because I had like two hours a week when I could leave the house and there was somebody there to help him. So these things that Alma has brought about have made a tremendous amount of difference. And when you are asked as a volunteer here at the senior center to deliver May baskets or, uh, Fourth of July blueberry pies. It's amazing when people open the door and you're standing there and they are so excited. I had one lady that I knew was away on vacation when we were doing the pies. So I didn't, I knew she wasn't home. She'd been gone for a couple of weeks. When she got home, she called me. She said, I'm home. Can you bring me my pie? But I mean.
That was our, that was our first COVID Fourth of July, so.
This is what things, I know it doesn't appeal to everybody in the town, but it, boy, it reaches many people in the town. And it gives folks a chance to smile and, and know for that minute that somebody is thinking about them.
I was so excited to get our May baskets. It really is. It really is wonderful.
Yeah.
It really is. And the caregiver dinners which we get, like you said, Linda, it's meals you don't have to worry about. And that's very important right now in my life.
Right, most of those, um, May baskets were made by a Brownie troop. Stephanie went to a couple of their meetings to work with them. That was so cute.
And the Thanksgiving dinners that we do. I know I wanted to.
And Christmas dinners. Yeah, I make these guys all deliver the Thanksgiving dinners. I don't.
We love it. I mean, it's not that what you're describing, it's, we love it. But I think that, again, I mean, they, some of the recommendations in here is to make sure everybody knows about all that great stuff, you know, so.
All right, uh, I, again, I only read the executive summary at this point about your point on the, uh, the senior center versus a community center. I believe it said there that forty percent of the respondents, uh, voted for an all, uh, all ages community center. It didn't say what the other sixty, so I assumed there were multiple choices and that'll be in the detail.
Yeah, so, so some people were.
So I'm looking forward to reading that.
Yeah, so some people didn't have an opinion, um, and then others obviously felt a different way, so.
Yeah, when you get to the end, the last ten or fifteen pages where all the questions are with the numbers and the age group breaks down, it, it, yeah. I think, I think the detail to any of these areas, I know that one, that one's of high interest for lots of people, is always, you know, really fleshing out kind of the details. So imagine, you know, imagine you sort of have.
Been broken out that sixty percent.
Exactly, e- exactly, yeah, so, so.
Does anybody else have a comment or shall we move on to the mini buses? That's what, I have friends that come from other towns to come to our senior center because we have such a variety of activities and they love the meals.
That's great. Yes, one of your very close personal friends, I don't know why I haven't been getting those dinners at the back door. It was, uh, the chicken with the lemon pepper stir fry. Oh my God, she went on and on and on about that, so, yeah, anyway. Okay, so. Thank you. You can stay.
Thank you very much.
Not gonna be that much longer, so.
Stay for a little bit.
You are very welcome.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, everybody's favorite subject of classes.
I know, I'm gonna be dead before we get this bus back. So the day of our last meeting, I had told you that Dana and Jim Stewart went up to Worcester. So this is what I heard from. Dana and I took a ride to Worcester Truck Body yesterday for some information on the delay of the repairs to the bus. We were told that the issue is that the section of the roof that needs to be replaced simply is not available from the manufacturer. Oh, I wish they'd told us this three months ago. They have now decided to cut the section of the roof out. Then the adjuster will be called to inspect and give his okay for them to fabricate the section, excuse me, in-house. We were told this process will start this week, so that was four weeks ago. Dana and I will be doing follow-ups with them throughout the process. They did not give us a completion date at this time. This process is typical for that sort of repair where replacement parts aren't available. I'll keep you posted. Like I said, I wish they had made that decision three months ago. We'd have the bus back already, but they didn't. I was not able to get ahold of Jim today to see what was going on, but I did leave him a message, so, um.
So you know what's happened in the last month at all?
No, I know Jim's called them a couple of times and they're working on it, but I don't know what that means, so. I mean, I would love to have that bus back by the summer. I'm, I'm struggling right now. I mean, I would love to have that bus back by the summer. I'm, I'm struggling right now because I like to be able to do our little mini trips and ice cream trips and all that, but it's really hard to do that when we only have one bus that's got a lift that works and it, it's making me crazy, so.
Is this the only company that we have to use?
Worcester Truck Body? I, I think they're the only ones that do like industrial fiberglass work. I, I don't know why, I mean, the DPW sends stuff up there. I don't know why that was done that way, but like I said, I wish, the bus has been up there since the twenty-eighth of October, so. It's been up there for a while. So I wish they had.
It's May.
I wish they had made the decision three or four months ago to do it this way rather than just having it sit up there all winter long. But anyway, I will talk to Jim before the week is over, I'm sure, and get a better update on that, so. Cause Jim had, he said too that if he, if they hadn't gotten a, a good enough response, he was just gonna, that's why he took Dana with him. They were just gonna bring it home and find something else to do with it, but, or someplace else to send it.
I wonder, I mean, the Autobody Place here in Westboro, that they do that kind of work, but they do fantastic work.
I think the reason they, because it's, the bus is too big, like it won't fit into their garage there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure.
I think that was the reason we had that.
I'm sure that is the reason why Worcester's chosen.
Yeah, the other thing was that we did send the, the, the big bus that we still have here out to Webster last Monday. And the, the lift was checked and adjusted and oiled and whatever, and it's in good shape, so. And that didn't actually cost us as much as it did to fix the other one, which made me happy. But, so that lift is working. The lift on the, the old buses, I, I, I don't know. We've already put a lot of money into that bus and I just can't see putting a whole bunch more into it at this point. We're managing. And people have been really good, like we've called and told them that, you know, we, we, can you move your appointment? Or can you, you know, can we pick you up a little early or whatever? And people are fine with it. They're just grateful to be able to get to their appointments and do what they need to do, so.
The saga continues.
It's never gonna end.
Shelby, may I ask you, if there is a facility here in town that could do repairs, what would have to be done to have that happen? I mean, do we go to?
No, I mean, Jim would have to decide. And like I said, I think the reason why it wasn't done here at the place up near Kathy's is that the garage isn't big enough and it's not tall enough.
Okay, no, I understand. That I get, but I just.
But Worcester Truck Body's a huge facility that does all sorts of stuff, so.
I just kinda have.
Just seems like the timeline is excessive.
Uh, you think?
We might have a fire under them.
They.
Well, I mean, I do think that we all know that there are issues. I mean, you just said that they can't get the parts, so.
Well, but if they couldn't get it in May, why couldn't they have told us they couldn't get it in?
They spent months exhausting.
February.
My understanding from Jim is before you got that last update, they had people who actually went out of state looking at parts and were not able to identify things. So I think they were spending that time actively searching. Because obviously what they're doing now, if they had been able to get the parts, that was preferable. So it wasn't, my discussions with Jim, it wasn't just sitting there with no attempt being made.
No, no, I mean, this is kind of a last ditch effort, but I, anyway. I will definitely connect with him and see what, if anything, or eve, or remind him to call them again and nag them, so.
Well, it sounds like there are a couple of steps. I mean, you need a insurance, given the change in approach, the insurance adjustment needs to be done. Has that been done? When, when is fabrication actually, is it approved? How much is fabrication on a cost? I mean, there, you know, there's lots of information that it would seem, I don't know, within a month that they should be able to provide. That's pretty frustrating, so.
Well, but you also just haven't talked to Jim, right?
Not, no.
So.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying within a month, it seems like there should have been an update from somewhere, that's all.
Yeah, he could have updated you without, you're having to necessarily call them and ask for the update if you've gotten any information.
Anyway, so maybe there's an update sitting out there just to minimize.
That would be nice.
Okay. Um, just a reminder, I registered all of you for the training at the Shrewsbury Town Hall on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth of June. I will remind you again on the twenty-seventh of June. And.
Is it the twenty-seventh, the twenty eighth?
No, I will remind you again on the twenty-seventh for the twenty-eighth.
So yeah, the twenty-eighth, the ring.
What was the time on that?
Uh, one thirty to three thirty.
Is that the same day as birthday, aren't you?
No.
Oh.
Maybe. Yes. Anyway.
Okay.
So is the Town Hall in Shrewsbury in the complex where the senior center is?
Yes. Yeah, I, it's like to the left, I think.
Oh, with the Town Hall.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Senior Center's in the right, yeah.
Yeah, in that, yeah, whatever, like horseshoe kind of thing, so. But yes, so you are all registered, so.
And then is something May fifteenth here?
Yeah.
Open meeting law.
Yeah, that's, that's coming up next. So the Memory Cafe is back up. We've already had a lot of people that were, are very interested in being here. It will be on the eighteenth, which is the afternoon of the volunteer recognition breakfast. And if you haven't RSVP'd yet, please do. And these girls I work with, Stephanie's already got her whole theme all planned. We kept the Sunshine Cafe, cause nobody else had that name, and we kept that. It's on all sorts, all sorts of websites across the state. We've sent flyers out to all of our, all the, all my caregiver support group people got them, all of the, um, you know, we put them in the, um, caregiver dinners last, did we put them in last week? We don't?
No.
Okay, I lied. I'm sorry. Anyway, they, you know, it's out there, so we're hoping for a good response. Dennis is gonna be playing that day. He enjoys doing that a lot. And so it should be a good day, so. And we gotta get Nancy in here to throw some more stuff out in this room, so we have an.
Absolutely.
Nancy's ruthless when it comes to cleaning stuff and throwing stuff.
Your grin is quite funny. Your grin is really quite noticeable. I wish my husband would let me throw more stuff away at home, so you take it out on you.
But we recycled some things. We didn't just throw everything away.
Oh, we did, yes, yes.
There were three boxes of random sized vases that went back to Muffet's Forests and, yeah, so.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome. It was my pleasure.
We were all happy when Nancy walked in the door, so.
Stephanie said, here she is. She loves to throw things away.
Yeah, and Michael does too. He's another one.
Yes.
He shows no mercy, so.
If all of you gentlemen won't listen for one moment, I learned when I was, you know, when people was alive, if I wanted to get rid of something, the black trash bags, put them in.
Black trash bags.
Yep, the, the ones you can see through.
No, no.
No, 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 no. I got rid of a three hundred year old pair of Birkenstock sandals when I was married in one of those black trash bags. I don't know where they went to, anyway. Also in your, I put those in your mailbox before, when I got them last week about the open meeting, law training. That is on the fifteenth, that night at the, in the Great Hall.
Yep, of course, I think.
Um, I would strongly recommend that you all go, just so you understand, it's not, it's not like it used to be. I've even learned a few things lately. I don't like when they change the rules, but it's okay. Most of the changes in May were good ones, so. By all means, I guess I'd make time to, to do that that night, so. I don't know if there's any, I don't think we've.
That meeting starts at six?
Yeah, yes.
I think anything that will help us to do our volunteering better is a good thing.
Better.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah. What?
No, nothing, nothing.
Oh, okay.
There was no registration required for this.
Okay, okay. So I started last Wednesday with the music on Wednesday at lunchtime. And I think we had twelve or fourteen people here. Stephanie put out a tray of cookies, made some lemonade, and some people brought their lunch. And they listened, Dennis played for about an hour, and can we do this all the time? That was, I said, well, find me some more piano players and such, so Nancy's gonna be here this Wednesday. If you'd like to come here, Nancy, you can order a turkey sandwich for Wednesday as grab and go lunch and enjoy some tunes in the middle of the day. I don't know, nothing makes people happier, I think, than music, so. We'll go for it.
It's an international language, it is.
Yep, it is. It is, it is. We were approached by Julia at Youth and Family Services. She was trying to put together some activities for Mental Health Awareness Month, which is May. And she suggested that we do a multi-generational, she called it a creative social, which was something I had never heard of, but, and we're gonna be doing some crafts with the seniors and the kids, and it kinda, it should be fun. And that's why I need the covers.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Did you know about covers? Yes, because we're gonna be making sun catchers.
Okay, so.
But I need enough of these for everybody, cause the glue isn't gonna dry fast enough to take it home without the cover attached to it, so.
So covers of that size.
So cheese, yeah, cheese, yogurt.
Clear?
Cream cheese. I don't care.
Doesn't matter, okay.
I mean, this says Parmesan cheese on that. That, that part of it doesn't make a difference. I know the ones that come on the breadcrumbs are clear, but I couldn't take that one off my mother's. Even though she hadn't opened it yet, I couldn't, couldn't take the cover, but, yeah. So if you've got covers, just drop them by. I talked to some people this morning in the Town Hall. I said, just throw them in my mailbox and wait until you bring me covers and shake his head.
When is this gonna happen?
It is going to happen on Tuesday afternoon, May twenty-third, from three to five.
Will it be here, all of a sudden?
Yes, 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 yes. Yes, and also that day is a conversation with Detective Dean Payne from the Westboro Police Department. He's a very interesting young man. So. Like I said before, if you have not RSVP'd for your, for the volunteer breakfast, please do so. Cause we're gonna have to call in the, the count for the breakfast by next, well, Monday at the latest, I think. And then just a couple of other things I thought of. So I did appear before the Board of Selectmen last week, or week before.
Mm-hmm.
Two weeks, two weeks ago.
Yep.
Um, and our request for the additional hours for Kristen, Stephanie, Mike, Sharon, and Tammy were approved. Those additional hours start Monday, this, next Monday, the fifteenth. So I've already done all the paperwork, so. And then another thing came up in the meantime. The Westboro Rotary Club on Saturday, the twentieth, they're doing a day of service for veterans and seniors. I guess it's kind of spread out a little bit. It included things like yard work and helping move stuff and meals and whatever. But then Roberta Brown was coordinating it. She found out that we can't, like, people can't just cook at their house and take stuff to people. No, no, it's okay. So we're gonna do the cooking here and they're gonna kind of use this as their launchpad for all of this. I'm hoping to get some free labor out of this for our veterans garden. That's my. I said to Roberta, I'll trade your kitchen for cleaning up the veterans garden in the back and getting it planted and taken care of by Memorial Day. I'm not sure how many people are gonna participate in that. We have started a list of people that can either, you know, use a, a meal and a visit or, you know, need some yard work done or, you know, help moving something or whatever. There's a list of things that they were, were gonna be able to do. And we've been working with the veterans, the Veterans Advisory Board and the Rotary, and I think it'll be fun. We'll be here that day, so.
What day is that?
Saturday, the twentieth.
Saturday.
Oh, that, that. I've had a request from the, the pool players. They would like us to invest in a second pool table because there has, and it's growing. There is a group of centers that do tournaments among the centers, but you need two tables. And I'm pondering this. And I asked how much another pool table costs, and they said between two and three thousand dollars, depending upon how much. So I'm thinking I might ask the supporters if they might like to think about considering.
Where would you put?
Oh, they got that all figured out. It would basically be adjacent to where the other one is now. So there'd be, you know, one and then two in between that next set of where the poles are. I mean, it makes sense. We're gonna lose one of the square tables down there, but I don't, I don't see that as being too awful. And I mean, there's six guys down there playing right now, so. Have to think about it. Now that it's warmed up, the doors will be painted. We couldn't do it when it was, I mean, I would have loved to have done it after the storm ripped the paint off the doors, but, but now it's getting warmer. So those will be done in the next probably week or ten days. And if you saw the front page of the newsletter this month, I, I think I can think of two other times when I've ever done that on the front page. But I just think it's really important. We can't, I, we can't do this again. We need to make sure people have working smoke detectors. And just in the few days, it amazes me how many people have said to me, oh, I don't have any smoke detectors in my house. I said, well, you will soon. So I'll be using some of the formula grant money that was left from, after we paid the extra hours. I'll be using some of that to buy the smoke detectors. I've already talked to Captain Lerman at the fire station and we're working out the details of that. So, and Mike's happy to do it, and the fire department said, just tell us where and when and we'll, you know, we'll help. So if you do not have any working smoke detector in your house, or if you rip the batteries out because they goes off every time the porch shuts, don't you dare.
In the middle of the night.
No, they always, they always start chirping at three in the morning. And I've asked several firefighters over the years, why does that happen? And they have absolutely no idea. It never starts chirping at three in the afternoon. It's always at three in the morning. But that means you, you need a new battery, which we can help you with that too. We certainly have not had as many people do the battery exchange program as we have had in years past. But like I said, we need to, I, I don't wanna do this again. I still, that still breaks my heart, cause I knew that lady very well. And there's just, there's no reason why in this day and age. And what I said in the newsletter was, if you can't afford them, we can help you. If you can afford them, but you can't get them up on the ceiling, we can help you. If it goes off when you boil water, then maybe it's in the wrong place and we'll move it for you. I mean, we're happy to do all of that, so.
Wasn't there recently a fire again in Westboro that they did have alarms and the people got out?
Yeah, up on, top of Ruggles Street, yeah.
Luckily, luckily. That could have been a real tragedy.
But the house in Hawketon where that couple died, they didn't have, no.
They didn't have, neither.
So like I said, this is my.
So it is very, very important.
Yes, it is. It is. And if you're, if you're profoundly deaf and you're not gonna hear that thing, although I don't know. I think that some of those alarms would wake the dead. They're so loud. But there's a thing called a bed shaker, and you slide it under your mattress, between your mattress and your box spring. So if your smoke detector goes off, your bed shakes. It's not the same thing as putting the quarter in the thing in the bed in the hotel room. It's not. Somebody, somebody asked me that. I said, no, it wakes you up, cause your house is on fire. But anyway, we also have access to some of those, so if you need something like that. There's also a strobe light they could put in your bedroom that will, yeah, so. So one way or another, we'll try to keep you a little safer, so.
And you could urge people, I hope somehow, if they have the. And you could urge people, I hope, somehow, if they have the um, bottled gas, get rid of it.
Yeah, you don't need to keep all, you don't, yeah.
Was that gas that she used in her home?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I, my impression from the newspaper story was that it was from ga- a grill, like gas grills or something. I don't, I don't know, but anyway, you wanna slice it, it was very tragic, so.
It was tragic. I used to babysit for the children. That's dating me back quite a bit.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then the last thing I had, um, the, we're starting to work on our summer programs. Um, I've already got three out of eight done, so I'm happy. Like, yay. Um, and um, I've contacted a couple different groups in town, um, to help us out those nights. Um, and um, I think it's good exposure for them. It's good, it's helpful for us, and, you know, um, they're happy to do it, so. So if you have any suggestions, I'm open to it. I know Trombetas was one that people really enjoyed for an ice cream trip, and um, Tammy took her group to the Willard Clock Museum this past week. Oh, they loved it. I have never been there.
Oh. I've never been. We live right down the street. Never been. I live right next to it.
Yeah, that's true. You've never been to some situation.
Willard House.
Probably thirty a funny year.
Yeah, um, there's also a bunch of places, um, there's a, an organization called the Highland Foundation, Highland Street Foundation out of Boston, and on Fridays, they have um, for the, all the Fridays during the summer. Actually, it starts right around Memorial Day. And, and um, entrance to a lot of these places, like Plymouth Plantation, and the Modern Art, and all of these places, the um, entry is free. Um, but Tammy was very lucky, because during, um, I think it was that week or during the month of May, God Ed Insurance had paid, so that anybody who wanted to go, it was free at Willard Clock Museum, so. Um, I don't think, but I, I mean, I think last year it was, it was reasonable. I think the most expensive one was when we went to the Worcester Art Museum, it was fourteen dollars, but that seniors and that's still not bad. So, um, yeah, so.
And would this Tower Hill offer any time?
I just said that.
Yeah, she.
Yeah.
I just said that. I said, have you owned Tower Hill?
We can investigate that. That was one of the other suggestions that came up, um.
Uh, uh, Tammy brought the group there just before COVID.
Tower Hill, yeah.
I, I went to that.
Long, long time ago.
Beautiful place.
Um, I know this month she's going to Riverbend Farm in um, Uxbridge, and then they're having lunch at the Maison Mangere, which is a adorable little restaurant in one of the old mills down there. They have, um, it, they have crepes and all sorts of cool food. I've eaten there a lot. I love it. And it's always something different, so, anyway, so that's.
What about Garden in the Woods in Framingham? Been about a million years since I've been there.
Yeah, they're, they, I remember, I called them, I think, last year, cause I thought that would be a nice, or Tammy, I, Tammy called them, I guess. I called Ar- Arnold Arboretum. Um, Tammy called them, and they were really picky as to, yeah, it was kinda weird. We also called Arnold Arboretum, cause I was thinking about the lilacs would be gorgeous. The problem was that you can't take the bus in there.
Oh.
You have to walk the whole, yeah, and that's.
No, that's not acceptable.
Not really workable for, yeah.
And it's. Better to be in a um, tank when you go in there.
Okay.
Bus. What one?
Arnold Arboretum.
The Arboretum.
Oh.
Oh, I loved used to be in there.
What about the, um, place in, um, oh, it's not Marlborough Hudson, the, has military displays?
Oh, they went there last year, yeah. Yeah, so veterans getting free, and then, I think it was like six or eight dollars for anybody else that wasn't a veteran
Oh, they could, yeah.
It's a very.
Yeah, I heard, thank you. That's.
To get in. Yeah, that was relatively inexpensive too. I try to keep things so that everybody can go and, um, you know, we're not, um, putting a big dent in somebody's pocketbook, so. Um, I know last year, if you came to all eight nights, I think if you paid for everything, it was twenty eight dollars for.
Yeah.
Was.
That wasn't bad.
Yeah, for, I might have to go up a little bit this year on the price. I know I have to go up a little bit on the clam bake price, but not a lot, just a little bit, so.
Well, it's understandable.
Lobsters are getting ex- lobsters are charging a lot for themselves, so.
Like everything.
So.
Well, you know they're good eatin', so.
I know. Um, we also have a presentation here on the twenty fifth with um, mass mosquito control, um, to talk about keeping yourself safe and from mosquitoes and ticks.
And ticks, I should say. The ticks have been part of one this, this year.
Yeah, I had a friend who commented yesterday, she took her dog out, and she took fifteen ticks off of him, so. Yeah. Um, there's one more Red Sox afternoon game. Um, we do have tickets to go to the Bravehearts on the twenty fourth. The Worcester Red Sox are, they don't have any daytime games during the week.
Oh.
So I'm kinda struggling with that. Oh, well, they did have one, but it's um, summer camp day, and I thought, no.
Oh, no.
So, we might just have to watch baseball on TV this summer, I don't know. Um, anyway, so we're, we're working on summer, and um, like I said, things are going well, but RMV people are seeing folks every week. Um, I just, I wish we could get our bus back sooner, so I could start taking people to the registry to get their ID cards, like we used to, but um, a lot of ID cards, so, anyway.
Do we still have a bus available from the school? Or is that?
Not right now, cause of sports and all the stuff. Um, I investigated that a few weeks ago, and it's like, well, you'd have to have it back by noon, a bus, like, we'll manage, so. Anyway, but.
If you had things planned and transportation was an issue, is there any way that, I mean, I would be willing to pick up two or three people and follow the bus in my car?
Yeah, and we've had that happen in the past. Um, we had a couple, I don't know, a few years ago, we had a couple ladies that just got in their own car and drove to Maine, followed the bus all the way. Well, cause they didn't get their tickets in time, and we had sold the bus up, they said they, it's like, can you still add us? It's like, yeah, you can add as many people as I want.
Ah, they sold overnight?
Well, fine, we'll drive, so. They met us at Stonewall Kitchen, and then, you know, the whole truck with us, so. Um, and I, I think um, the day we went to the Collier Museum up in Hudson, um, the Military Museum, I think we had a couple people that drove their own cars that day too, but they were included in our number, so they got the discount for the tickets, so. Um, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but.
Oh, okay, good.
So. So I'll be investigating some.
I was gonna say, Nancy likes to go into the ocean.
I know, a lot of people do, so.
You saw the picture. I was saying.
So we have a, we have a plan B if it's raining that day, which God forbid it hasn't, except once in all these years. We'll stop at the candy store there on the way. Yeah, if it, if we can't stop downtime, cause it's raining. No, yeah, but, no, 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 this is the other one on Route One, yeah.
The golden one? Oh, the other one? Okay.
Yeah, I keep seeing it on Phantom Gourmet. I need to investigate that, so, yeah, so.
And the bread company.
And the bread company, yes.
Good places to go.
Yes, yes.
Fun places.
Yeah, except they don't make my apricot and date bread anymore, so.
Did you guys mention the um, the, the presentation is gonna be tonight at the board, I mean, tomorrow night?
What?
The seniors is gonna be presented. Oh, you mentioned it. Oh, okay, I missed it, sorry. I didn't know if to hear it then.
Yeah. We said that, yeah.
So, so we're moving right along.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any other business to come before the board today?
When will we see a draft of the revised bylaws?
Oh, and I apologize for that. I just ran out of time, cause I decided it was gonna be easier for me just to retype them than to try to fix them. And you'll have those in June, I promise.
Okay.
Well, you all will have it before then, but the council will have them in June.
All right.
Um, yeah. So.
That's the bylaw.
Probably should just report on that, that John and myself and Alma met.
And Linda.
And Linda, and met, uh, and reviewed the current bylaws, and made some updates to it. And that we're gonna bring out here for the board to, to approve. We were hoping to have them today, but we'll have them next month.
I, I, like I said, I, I just ran out of time, and I'm not a typist, so. But, I'm getting there.
Well, I do think the things that we did discuss today were important. I will admit, I was very anxious to hear
Mm-hmm.
the report from the survey, so I thank both of you for just sitting here and talking with us, and um, and so if there being no further business, Shelby.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second it. All those, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
See you.
Okay, the next meeting will be.
It's Monday, June twelfth.
You're welcome.